...of City Council to order. We have been meeting in closed session. We'll talk about that briefly, but first would like to have our roll call vote, please.
Councilman Zipper?
President.
Councilman Peterson?
President.
Kamfunk Popescu?
Here.
Mayor Brower?
Here.
Mayor Protem Rigsby is absent. There is a forum.
As I just mentioned, we were meeting in closed session just before the open portion of our agenda, and I will ask our city attorney to provide us a report based on that closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City Council has been in closed session regarding a pending legal matter which is identified on the agenda. That's the universal self-storage versus Save Loma Linda matter. The council gave direction. There's no final action reported this time.
Thank you. Next item are the invocation and pledge of allegiance. It was listed with Mayor Protem Rigsby. Since he's not able to make it, I will fill in on this item. So if you could stand with me for the invocation, please, and then the pledge of allegiance. To Father in Heaven, we thank you for opportunity to get together, City Council, to tackle some of the issues that we face in the city. We ask for your guidance. We ask for your patience. We ask for your direction on these deliberations as we handle the case.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of Washington, under God, indivisible, et bonum gratia.
Any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Thank you. This brings us to the portion of our agenda for oral reports, public participation on items that are not on the agenda. I have one slip related to this and so forth, and a slip from Dick Wiley, and I see we might have some other ones, and we'll make sure everyone has an opportunity even if I don't have a slip. So anyway, we'll start with Mr. Wiley, and we'll give everybody the usual reminder, three minutes if we can, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, we'd like to extend an invite to you for the next Sunday for our history fair and luncheon. Luncheon will start about 12, 12:30 over at the Senior Center, and it's going to be a big day, full day, and just wanted to invite you to participate if you are able to. We'd love to have you, and I know there's a lot and a lot of work that has gone into this, so it's good, and I want to thank Jarb. I go up by Heritage Park every day, and boys getting better and better, and it looks real nice up there. And there's been an awful lot of work that the guys down at City Yard have put into this, so it looks good.
So anyone from the public that wants to participate, there's nothing they need to do ahead of time, just be present and...
Well, the luncheon is a ticketed luncheon.
But they can buy it onsite, correct?
I don't know whether they can buy it onsite, but I know the tickets are out there, and I think you can get them at the chamber office at this point. And then the history fair will be at the fire station. That's free and open, and then the Heritage Park will have a tee down there, and that's free to the public. That'll be three to five, and the other will be about two to five in the fire station.
So check with the chamber on the lunch tickets and everything else. You can pretty much just show up and participate, which will be a lot of fun and a lot of interesting things.
I think Jarb will add more on that later.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dick.
I believe that the lunch tickets are somewhat controlled because the preparers have to know how much food to order, so at some point, I believe it's going to be cut off.
So talk to the chamber.
Right, so make sure that you talk to the chamber.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you for that update. So this coming Sunday, Mr. Christensen.
Mr. Christensen, thank you very much. Mike Christensen. Counsel, I would... Mr. Mayor, I'd like to direct my question to staff, if I may.
Sounds legitimate.
Especially our city attorney. On Poplar Street, we have a very large new complex right by the bridge, and more is being constructed at that site. I have noticed that nearby, on the construction site, is a very, very, very tall camera, surveillance camera, and I understand that was necessary because Deborah said that there was thefts of building materials. Is that correct?
I don't know. It's put up by the construction contractors.
By the construction company. It is... I have a telescope, and I walk out and just set it up on my back door and looked at the camera, and every once in a while, the cameras would be not on the creek or on the job site, but they would be looking clear across into our... all the backyards on Cottage Street, which are next to the canal. Now, my question is, if they're... if we are under that kind of... you know, it's... if you're not doing anything wrong, why are you worried? It's not that. It's the principle only. It's the same thing as the lights. It's that intrusion into your privacy, you know? Am I making my... My question is... this is my question. Is there something about that that is not correct? That they are extending their view from the site, past the site, and are there any provisions where we can request respectfully that they lower the cameras and keep the cameras on the job site where it's necessary to keep secure building materials that naturally they're going to have to use?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I don't recall anything in the conditions of approval addressing the security camera situation. That could be noted in the conditions in the future if there's a concern about privacy. Certainly, the developer and the contractor are going to want their security system to be focused on those areas of their property that are at risk to crime, not on any neighbors or far field. So I think staff could probably check with the contractor, the developer, and address that on an informal basis, probably without requiring any council action.
Sure, of course. Second thing is the amount of light being shone across. You know, I've said before, I don't need a nightlight in my house anymore. There's one big round orb in the back, in the back near the basketball hoops that when they're playing basketball, I hear every hoop. It echoes off of the wall of the complex and across the creek, the sound. But the light, it just... it lights up the entire inside of my house. Do I build a wall? Do I ask for some sort of mitigation measures? Actually, the taller lights, the taller lights in the parking lot are much less intrusive. There's this one great big, it looks like, you know, a two-foot orb that is unbelievably bright, and I'm just wondering if there's some way that at a certain point in the day or in the evening that that can be dialed down, and it'll actually probably save us money. So those are the only questions I had, and I appreciate the time. Thank you so much.
Thanks. Bye.
If you go and climb over and peek between fence slats or something of that nature, that might be a violation of privacy, but that would be a private civil issue.
Yeah, I guess we can consult with Barbara Streisand. Didn't she have some issues on that, too, with satellite images? There's eyes looking from all directions. Anyway, thanks for those concerns, and certainly look into that. Next slip I have is from Kathy Quinrich. Good evening.
Good evening. Recently, Councilman Zipperk, ex-councilman Crispin, and some of their supporters have made some misleading and false statements about some important city issues, so I'd like to take the opportunity to correct the record. First, regarding Save Loma Linda's lawsuit against the City Council. If Councilman Zipperk and ex-councilman Crispin had followed the 1996 Hillside Initiative and other laws, there wouldn't have been a lawsuit, and it wouldn't have cost the city any money. If they had responded to our numerous public comments and our letters, there wouldn't have been a lawsuit, and it wouldn't have cost the city any money. Unfortunately, we had to sue the City Council to force the elected representatives to follow the law. As a result of our lawsuit, the council did follow the law, including the 1996 initiative. The lawsuit was filed in response to several of Councilman Zipperk and ex-councilman Crispin's approvals. They had adopted a new general plan which would have overdeveloped the city and allowed massive development of the South Hills. In the new general plan, they omitted the vast majority of the 1996 Hillside Initiative and instead substituted the developers' plan to build over 1,200 housing units in the hills. They also put the developers' hillside plans on the ballot as Measure U. The purpose of the lawsuit was to stop overdevelopment, protect the hills, force the council to follow environmental laws, including the 1996 initiative, and to ensure that we would not run out of water and the traffic and other environmental impacts related to noise and air pollution and biological resources in open space, to make sure those impacts to those resources would be mitigated. We succeeded in those goals. Save Loma Linda members have paid thousands of dollars out of our own pockets to stop overdevelopment and protect the hills. We have not made any money. The city paid approximately $90,000 to our attorney for his extensive efforts, but Save Loma Linda and its members did not receive any money from the lawsuit. Claims from Mr. Crispin and his supporters that we pocketed thousands of dollars from the lawsuit are completely false. Claims that we pocketed any money from the lawsuit are completely false. We have informed Mr. Crispin of this and told him that he needs to stop misleading the citizens. The paramedic fee program has nothing to do with any lawsuits. Mr. Zipperk voted for the paramedic fee, and it's my understanding that contrary to Mr. Crispin's claims, for that fiscal year, 2009, the city had a budget surplus. Contrary to Mr. Zipperk's claims that we keep hearing for several years, and this one's getting really old, my mother, Dr. Georgia Hodgkin, and I are not major landowners in the hills, and we are not trying to develop the hills. While Dr. Hodgkin and I both own homes in the hills, the claims that we are trying to develop the hills or profit from our extensive efforts to limit development is nonsensical and not true. By way of example, I own 0.0017 of the hills, and Dr. Hodgkin owns 0.0005 of the hills. In other words, both of us own less than a fraction of 1% of the hills. Our goals are to preserve open space and limit development in the hills. We've obviously been fighting for this for several years. It's also crystal clear from reading of Measure V, which we spent a countless amount of time and energy and quite a bit of money trying to pass and defend, and it's clear from our public comments. Not surprisingly, it's actually the developers who have filed plans to build over 1,200 housing units in the hills, which Councilman Crispin and ex-councilman Crispin voted for, who are actually trying to develop the hills. Hopefully, this will clear the record a bit. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Mr. Mayor, do I have an opportunity to respond?
You certainly may, and I'm not going to necessarily have a point and counterpoint, but you absolutely, I think, should have the opportunity to respond in any way you think you would like.
All right, thanks. That's on the screen. I'll be very brief. I worked on the 1996 initiative, Kathy. I don't think you did. I worked with quite a few people on it, Wayne Isaiah, Bob Loder, members of the council. I was not on the council at the time. I'd worked on the original 1992 initiative, and the important thing about the 1996 initiative is that it provided encouragement through the initiative for the city to start acquiring the South Hills. It's actually in the initiative. That process had begun in 1994, and the city has now made four purchases, and the county has donated land to the city, most recently, about six acres. And the record's pretty clear that my efforts have been unremitting since about 1990 to get the land and the hills into open space, publicly owned. And why we're in this disagreement, I don't know, because I have done absolutely nothing to encourage 1,200 units to go into the hills. Now, as you know, under law, as you, Kathy, as you know under law, any private landowner has a right to propose something to the city, and various ones have over the years. But you look at the 92 initiative, the 96 initiative, you look at Measure T, which passed with about 90% support, and it has been totally geared at getting the land and the hills protected. Now, when you define the hills, if you talk about land that's outside the hills, that's in flatter areas, we were looking at ways, after talking with attorneys from other cities at League of Cities meetings, we did understand there are ways you could get land without purchasing it, because the city was not trying to use a great deal of money to buy up all the land. And that, of course, became impossible when density transfers to some extent were ruled out. So the last purchase, which was almost 600 acres, which was done in the period of June to July '08, put together the South Hills Preserve as we know it. And there's just nothing to your position that I have been encouraging homes in the hills. That's just been the opposite. In fact, for years, I had political heat from people who thought I was discouraging all development of the hills, and I have felt your position had been that you wanted custom homes in the hills, you know, large custom lots, and in some areas that might be appropriate, but not in the South Hills Preserve. If you get out to the fringes, I can understand where some private landowners the city has not bought out might want to have some, and I've understood that's what you intended to do. But other than that, if you and I are in agreement, if you like the South Hills Preserve, then we're in agreement, and we shouldn't be even having a big dispute, because we want the same thing then. I don't care. I'll leave it to the mayor.
Thirty seconds. I'm trying to avoid a point and counterpoint if we can. Thanks.
When you say you've done absolutely nothing, you voted for the developers' plans that they filed. It's in the record. It's from the developers to put over 1,200 housing units in the hills. It's in the city record. Anyone can request it from Pam. It's in the general plan. They filed it. You voted for it. You pushed it at public hearings. You pushed it at workshops. You put it on the ballot for them as Measure U. The San Bernardino Valley Autobahn Society had to intervene and warn residents that it was a Trojan horse written for and supported by developers, and citizens voted it down. So, yeah, you have to do something. You voted for it. It's in the record. It's in the record.
Kathy, Kathy, it's not even close to the...
Please request copies of the general plan from the clerk.
Kathy, you stay in... you stand meeting after meeting, saying it's in the record. That's not what the record shows.
What are you talking...
The record shows...
Do you recall voting for the general plan July 25, 2006? Did you read the part that involved the hills?
Yes, Kathy. Kathy, you understand that there are various laws which the city has enacted over years which are protecting the hills further and further. I don't know what you're talking about.
You voted for that general plan that included 1,200 housing units for the hills, and the...
No, there's no...
Didn't you?
No, there's no proposal that... Kathy, there is no proposal to put 1,200 units in the hills. There was an effort to move density out of the hills into flatlands if the developer... Look, you go ahead and talk, then I'll talk.
It would have resulted in over 1,200 units in the hills that you re-designated as flat out of the hills once we figured out how many houses you were intending to put there.
Kathy, there are people...
It's in the general plan. You requested from the clerk.
Kathy, it's not the hills. We're talking about flatland outside the hills.
It was the hills until we objected and told you there were too many houses and not enough open space, and what you didn't respond is all of a sudden re-designate that land as non-hillside.
Kathy, you're talking about...
It's in the general plan.
You're talking about parts that come in from San Antonio Canyon as being part of the hills.
It's south of Beaumont Avenue. It's along the ridge lines.
It's flat. Okay, Kathy, it's... No, we're talking about flatland that is over by San Tim Canyon, and the point was...
Bob, I've read the plan. Anyone else can read it, too. I encourage you to read the plan. You don't have to take my word for it or Bob.
Kathy, in the discussion, if we sit down and go through it, there was a point...
I've gone through it many times, and I'm sure you have, too.
Kathy, you can't deny that the city has worked steadily, and I've been part of a team that has worked with the Trails Committee, other groups for years, acquiring open space, and have supported consistently putting it into permanent protection. You're ignoring all of that.
No, I'm not ignoring that, but the problem is, even though you initially supported the 96 initiative, then you voted for the developers' plans, which violated it, and you never got around to including it into the general plan. So we had to sue the city of four should include the 96 initiative in the general plan.
We were meeting with you and your group weekly, sometimes twice a week. We never broke off discussions, and you filed Measure V, and I think the lawsuit sooner after, without telling us that you considered the meetings at an end. We'd been meeting regularly, and we didn't have some ultimatum from you. We didn't know that you had all these sudden moves coming, because we'd been talking at length.
There were no sudden moves coming. We were talking with you and the developers, trying to reach a compromise on the hills. The developers and you and the rest of your team wanted too many houses, so we took matters into our own hands and brought Measure V to the residents, and they voted for our plan.
I understand that, but the fact... See, you're making... you're trying to make a different point. You really want to convince the voters, because that's why you're doing this, is that somehow I really am not working to protect the hills. You're determined to make that case, and yet I've been working on protecting the hills since Artis Coves got a lot of us involved in 1990.
You know, Bob...
The record's very consistent, Kathy.
At some point, you switched sides, and...
No, I did not.
The problem was that on your watch, the developers had such extensive access to City Hall that they had the general plan update written to allow 3,600 houses in the hills and massive development.
Kathy...
And we fought it, and we fought it, and you were on their side, and you only got semi-serious when we proposed Measure V.
No.
And then you pushed the developers' plans for 1,200 units.
No, actually, that is totally false.
It's true, and you know it, Bob. It's in the record.
It's false, and you know it.
Please check the... Please check the records. You don't have to take any one of her words.
Kathy, the record is so complete, the other direction, I don't know what you're talking about.
I don't know what record you could possibly be referring to for you to cite on your behalf. Look at general plan drafts. Look at Measure U.
We have a totally different position on what has been done, obviously.
No, all you have to do is read the documents.
No, I have.
You're a lawyer. I'm a lawyer. You can read.
Just like you.
That's right. And hopefully, the citizens can read, too, and they can check the record for themselves.
If the citizens take a look at what's been accomplished, we have been working as a group for 20 years to get the South Hills Preserve established, and it's been achieved.
You know what? After... You know what?
You have never supported it.
The citizens are the ones who protected the hills and stopped the developers from building thousands of houses, because the citizens adopted the 96 initiative and Measure V.
I worked on the 96 initiative.
You turned against the 96... But then you violated it by voting for the developers' plans, and you...
No, no.
And you fought Measure V, and only when you lost, then you turn around and give 3.8 million to a campaign supporter. So...
By buying the hills, we followed the 96 initiative. By Measure T, we protected it.
The 96 initiative did not require you to overpay a campaign supporter. I've read it many times.
We did not.
Councilman?
If it were up to Save Loma Linda, we would probably not have the South Hills Preserve today.
Mr. Mayor, I've been on this council now for 20 years, just about, and I came on this council in 1990 because of the hillside issue. It has been a constant agitation for the last 20 years. That's how I got here 20 years ago. I've been a reasonably observant person during that 20-year time, and Mr. Crispin is not here to defend himself, so I'll say it. There have not been two other people in this town in the last 20 years who have put as much work into saving the hills as Mr. Zipperk and Mr. Crispin. It is... Mr. Crispin can take 100% of the credit for us acquiring the first big piece of land that's in the hills. He was the one that discovered it was coming up for sale by the federal government. None of the rest of us knew that. He brought it to council and said, "This is our chance. We need to buy it." He can take 100% of the credit for us acquiring that first big piece. These two people... And I remember the beginning initiative, because I was on the council and Mr. Zipperk was not on the council, and there were some unfriendly discussions at that time. Those have all been resolved, and those two people can take, as far as I'm concerned, the most credit for getting us in the position we are today with owning a major portion of the hills.
Any other comments on items that aren't on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to the rest of our agenda, scheduled and related items. First one was introduction of Sheriff's Captain, but I understand not able to be here at this moment. Is that right, Lieutenant?
That's correct.
Okay, so we'll postpone to another occasion when we have that opportunity. All right, thank you. Item number three is a presentation by... hate to use first name, but it seems like Robbie's what we all call you by. I hope you don't mind, from Senator Dutton's office in regards to some legislation that they're concerned will have an impact on us. Robbie?
Good evening, and thank you, Mayor Brower, council members, for this opportunity to speak. Senator Dutton has long held a concern about what the effect of the implementation of AB 32 will have on the people of California at this time. Since AB 32, which is California's Global Warming Solution Act, was signed into law in 2006, the US economy has plunged, and the California unemployment rate has soared from 4.8% to 12.5%, which is far higher than most of the other states in the US. The unemployment rate in California, I'm sorry, in the Inland Empire exceeds 14% at this time. The senator has asked the governor to delay the implementation of AB 32 until the California economy begins to have a fuller recovery, and as yet, he has been unsuccessful in his efforts. This year, legislation was introduced to also delay the implementation of AB 32 until the economy begins to recover. That, too, was killed in committee. There was a, if I may, an editorial that was in the Union Tribune on April 28th that starts out that there were reports of the League of California Cities... there were reports of the League of California Cities considering asking the state government to, again, delay the implementation of AB 32. And there has been discussions on both sides as to whether this would be a good thing or a bad thing. At this point, the senator was... Would like to know where the cities in his district stand on this. In consideration of the city of Loma Linda and how it will impact the city specifically, I know that the city manager would probably be better tuned to make that argument. I can say that one of the items that has been considered is the cap and trade, where the... Each industry business and city would be... Have a count done, an inventory done, of how much carbon footprint they send out. And the numbers have been thrown around as to how much it would cost each of the businesses, anywhere from $20 to $60 per ton. At the cost of $60 per ton, if cap and trade goes into effect, Loma Linda University would be forced to pay almost $4 million a year under the cap and trade initiative. Other institutions larger than the University of Loma Linda, such as UC Los Angeles, of course, would face costs exponentially higher. This is not something that is specifically... We know is going to be taken... Going to effect under the regulations that the California Air Resources Board is proposing, but it is definitely under consideration. Utility bills have... Will be... See an increase of up to 60%. Gasoline costs will increase. Produce will increase, because, of course, diesel, fuel, et cetera, will be... Will rise, and farmers' costs will go up. That said, the senator, at this time, as I said, would like to know whether the city of Loma Linda would consider, A, supporting the delay of AB... The implementation of AB 32. The city of Loma Linda would like to see the implementation of AB 32 to stay on track, or whether the city of Loma Linda would not like to take a position at this time, would like to remain neutral. I would be very happy to give the editorial that I brought up. As I said, the senator just wants to know where all the cities in his district stand. Some of the cities have taken a position to support the delay of the implementation. Some cities have taken the position of remaining neutral. And there are still... I know the city of Highland is meeting on it tonight. The town of Yucca Valley will be meeting on it at their next city council meeting... Or town council meeting. If there's any questions, I will be very happy to do my best to answer those.
Thank you. Councilman Peterson?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thanks for coming and presenting that. This is another one of those dilemmas, like... Almost like Mr. Christensen brought up a bit ago, and that is, there is a trade-off in society between safety and security. You can't have both. If you want safety... I'm sorry, between independence and liberty, and freedom and security. And if you want to be perfectly safe, the safest place is in solitary confinement. That's a very safe place to be, but then your freedoms are gone. There's a trade-off. And it's the same thing here. We have a trade-off between economics and living in a clean environment. Living in a clean environment is expensive. It's not cheap. It doesn't come cheap. And we're all realizing that. And so, there's a trade-off. Do we want to live in a dirty environment and have businesses succeed and make their profits? Or do we want to live in a clean environment? And where is the cutting line? Where's the cutoff line between a clean environment and economics? And this is one of those trade-offs, and it's a challenge for society to deal with those trade-offs.
Please.
Counselman Peterson, I do want to make it clear that the senator is not asking for AB 32 to be repealed.
I understand that, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. I understand that, sure.
Counselman Ziprick?
One of the problems that... In conferring with people who've been in other parts of the world, I have some friends who've been in places like China and done teaching jobs there. They've reported that China's on a pretty strong bent for adding, I think, one cold-fired power generation unit a week. And there are other places like that, too. And California already has done massive amounts of work to bring air pollution down. I remember as a kid, I was five years old, six years old, seven years old, and for many years after that, when I was practicing law here, first about 1976, there were days that the air was just basically thick. And we've done a pretty good job, I know, in this area, bringing that type of pollution down. I think the problem we're running into now is that, based on the numbers we're hearing, many of our organizations in the area would be put into extreme financial duress if this went into effect right now, because the economy's already weakened. That's something that's got to be taken into account. If things totally shut down, I suppose we'd have very clean air, but we'd have civilization breakdown.
Right, I understand.
So, that's something to take into account.
That's something we're allowing now.
Yes. But we're already way miles ahead of much of the rest of the world, compared to what's going on in other places.
Counselman Papezki?
My only comment is that I would support the senator's request, and I move that we pass supporting the suspension of AB 32 and pass this resolution that's in front of us.
I second it.
Make that as a motion.
I second it.
So, we have a resolution in front of us that basically supports the position that Senator Dutton has mentioned, and it's been moved and seconded. My comments, you know, in general, I've tried to avoid taking positions on issues that aren't direct city issues. There's so many issues that councils can get dragged into, but I do think this one has substantial direct costs, potentially to our city and the businesses herein. And so, I am definitely willing to weigh in, and I will definitely support this action that's been moved and seconded. I guess the part that, you know, besides the economic costs that we've talked about, you know, it's... We can get into the global warming debate, and I don't think it's appropriate to discuss that ad infinitum. But, you know, we're talking about, and I think what a lot of people have visions of what the original legislation was going to do, when you talk about cleaning up the air, we're not talking about getting rid of, you know, diesel fumes. We're not talking about nitric oxide, all these other things that we've always viewed as cleaning up pollution. We're talking about ways to reduce CO2. Is that a good goal? It may be, but it's not exactly that we're cleaning up something that is going to kill us, so we breathe it every day. So, the idea of pollution and what is pollution has morphed from what clearly any of us say would be pollution to something that may have an adverse effect on the whole Earth's climate, and we may need a coordinated response around the world to do that, or may not. Again, not going to get into that debate. But I think until we get into a way that we can have jobs for our citizens and so forth, without tackling something that may have some iffy propositions behind it, I fully support this action and will support the direction that we're indicated with the motion or the resolution that's been moved and seconded. So, any further discussion on Council Bill R-2010-16, Resolution Supporting Suspension of AB 32? Seeing no further discussion, all in favor of that resolution, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? It carries unanimously, and you can express our support in what Senator Dutton is working on, and appreciate you bringing this to our attention.
Can... Mr. Mayor, can I ask just one brief question? Are you getting a feel from across the state how other cities are coming down on this? It may be premature to give that type of report, but...
I can tell you that the city... Or the county of Riverside and the county of San Bernardino have both signed resolutions for the suspension of AB 32 until the economy recovers. My understanding is that the Desert Mountain Division of the League of Cities has also done that. In the senator's district, the city of Rancho Cucamonga, the city of Grand Terrace, the city of Redlands have all already passed support for the implementation. I don't know what happened in Highland. I was led to believe that Highland and the town of Yucca Valley will also follow suit with Loma Linda's. The city of Upland has asked not to take a position at this time, as had the city of Ucaiba.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
I'm going to stray in dangerous territory on the soapbox, but it just does seem like a lot of us feel on many issues on a statewide level, our legislature and governors seem to be taking us directions that we wonder why they are going those directions. So, I guess it's one way to at least express our concerns. All right, enough said on that. The next item is our consent calendar.
I'll move that with a comment on item number seven. Streets look great. I'm continually proud of the infrastructure condition of our city, and it really looks really good.
I'll second it with a comment on eight and nine. For those who may not be aware, number eight is very important, because it's an agreement that we're approving between ourselves, the IVDA and the city of San Bernardino. And this agreement is really important, and as it relates to the Anderson-Tupica New Interchange, many of us have been waiting for many years. One of the things that the public may not be aware of the fact is that the cost of that intersection has increased, and as a result, our portion of it has increased as well. And a lot of the times, those politicians take credit, but the reality is that it's staff that does most of the heavy lifting. And I want to give special attention to Jarb, because he's the one that stepped up in this particular situation. Even though myself and Councilman Christ... Councilman Peterson and Ziprick sit on the IVDA and the SBIA boards, it was Jarb who talked to the staff there and requested that they try to assist us in helping for our fair share. Well, because of his efforts and our cooperation with the IVDA and the city of San Bernardino, we were able to save the city approximately $2 million, and we're very thankful for that. So, it is one step closer. Another item on there, which is item number nine and 10, are interrelated, but it's the early signs that we're making progress towards getting that intersection done. The first one's an agreement between ourselves and the state as it relates to us giving up some of our land, as they're about to fix that intersection. And number... Item number 10 is an actual legal document stating that we are giving up some land for the actual intersection. So, we're at that point in time where things are happening, and agreements are being signed, and it's all part of the process. And slowly but surely, we're getting there towards trying to get that intersection back on track. It has been delayed for many, many, many years, and we definitely need to do more to ensure that it keeps on track.
Mr. Mayor, I join, and I know with also Floyd Peterson in saying that we recognize we have one of the best staffs in the state, and we're very grateful for that and the hard work that goes into that. They make it very easy to make these projects move forward, considering the obstacles are massive. We know that. So, thanks. I join in thanking you for your hard work.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, item number 10 is returning some property back to the original owners, just so the public is aware of that.
And...
Access property.
Again, agree with Councilman Ziprick and Papezki's comments, and just want to add one other detail on the timeline. You know, again, it seems like any of us that have lived here for the last 25 years have talked about, worked on this project, and many, many people. But, you know, the timeline, still looking at getting final design in 2011, which is next year, and actually still talks about construction starting in 2012. So, you know, 10 years ago, it was out there somewhere in the nebulous sphere. Now, we're, I mean, conceivably, literally, less than two years away of actual construction. Obviously, we know there's always delays. That's the nature of construction projects and government, but there is significant progress being made. All right. If there's no further comments, I believe the consent calendar has been moved and seconded. Anyone opposed to approving the consent calendar? Hearing none, consent calendar is approved unanimously. Don't see anything listed under old business, so we will move to new business. And we have always something that's, I think, a lot of interest to see what we'll be working on. This is the five-year capital improvement plan, and we're fortunate, again, to have city manager that is also in charge of Public Works and doing double duties, literally, and we appreciate that more than we can say, and look forward to your presentation on this capital improvements program.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you can see, this is the five-year capital improvement program, starting next fiscal year, which is 2010, 2011, through 2014 and 2015. The picture here is the picture of just completed Richardson Well Number Six, located at the northwest corner of I-10 freeway and Richardson. This well is capable of pumping 2,500 gallons per minute. This project's completed. The water is pumping into our water system. Little introduction to the five-year CIP. The purpose of this CIP is it's a planning document for the short-term and mid-range term for both the planning and budgeting purposes. It is important that we understand that by just doing a project, we have to figure out, in addition to building it, we have to figure out how are we going to maintain and operate those infrastructures. Also important to point out that the CIP is a planning document. It does not appropriate any funding. The... Only the project that budgeted at the current year is that the city council will have opportunity to review and approve the funding for this project. The CIP has been divided into seven major categories. The first one is fleet, which has to do with all the automobile equipment, as well as all-new vehicle. And this is, you know, we have the city have the city fire engine, Public Works have trucks, backhoe, all this equipment that we have to plan and budget for. Usually, the funding for this project is coming from the general fund. Next is general building. Those building include the... Those projects include the remodeling, replacing an existing facility, and the construction of new facility. The potential funding for this project is usually come from the CDBG, general fund, and the... Also, the RDA tax increment bond. The next category is park and recreation. You know, in the past, we have planned for building a new park, new playground equipments, and during the past, I believe, nine years, I have been building a lot of parks and adding playground equipment to our city parks and facility. The next category is sewer system, and this is to increase the sewer capacity for new user or replacing the old pipeline that's in the ground. The same thing with the storm drain system, is to install a new storm drain facility or replacing the old storm drain system. And this has to be... And this has to be in compliance with the storm drain master plan. Next is the street and street light. It happened to do with the pavement rehabilitation, the street widening project, the bridges that we just complete at Mountain View sidewalk, street lighting, bicycle lane. Those are the projects that are in the street and street light category. Next is the water. And again, this is, look at a project that evolved a water system pump, replacing the pipeline and the distribution of the water system in the city. Where's the money coming from to do all this project? Well, I know of, there's about 36 different funding sources that we could use to fund this project. A lot of them are part of the federal and state grant that the city have to apply for and sometimes we get lucky and we get those grants. For example, the Mountain View Bridge widening project, 80% of the funding came from the highway bridge rehabilitation and replacement program. And at the same time, when you receive the money from state and federal grant, there's a lot of rate tape and guideline that we have to follow and to make sure that we do everything that it requires to do to spend the money. For fleet project, again, I would like to kind of concentrate on next fiscal year, which is 2010 and 2011. For the next, for the following four years, it's a planning. It doesn't mean that even though I put it on here, it will be budgeted or billed or purchased at those following years. A lot of time is, we just put it in for planning purposes and we don't know where the money coming from yet. If there's no money, then we just kind of move it further to the following years and so forth. But for this coming fiscal year, we would like to propose the replacement of the water production vehicles, fire department vehicles, and also the Rescue Number 251. And the price tag on this vehicle is quite expensive. It's $280,000. And we don't have the money that we can pay in the lump sum. So we have been working with the chief vendor and the finance to looking for an opportunity to get some loan, similar to the way I buy my car, I get an auto loan. So what we plan to do for the Rescue Unit of 251, we plan to get a loan, a car loan, a low interest, by the way, because we are a local public agency. And then we kind of set aside for the future year that, you know, we have to set aside some money for replacing the typical water trucks and public works vehicles and trucks and so forth. And the same thing with the fire department. General building, for next fiscal year, all we plan to do is put in a canopy at the city yard. We also budgeted for this fiscal year also. And the whole purpose of that is to put in a solar panel so that we can use the electricity to operate the city yard and save us on the electric bill. The following year, we would like to see the expansion for the EOC expansion at our fire station. The following year, year 12, 13, to remodel existing restroom at the city yard. And in the future year is for the training tower for the fire station, for the fire department. For park, again, during this past nine year, I have built a lot of new parks and come along, you have to remember when you build a lot of parks, that have staff to maintain this facility. And at this point, I'm happy to say that we pretty much, and we'll have to look at the park committee members, we have done a good job at building the park that we need for the city. So in addition to continue with the San Mateo Channel Habitat Improvement, this is the grant money that we received from EPA to put in the habitat area along San Mateo Channel. And then we just budget every year for tree planting program, tree replacement at the city park and along the public right of way.
Jarb, can I stop you one second?
Yes, sir.
That San Mateo EPA money, how long ago did we get that, actually get that money? Well, was it...
At least, at least 10 years ago. I've been here, believe, about nine years, so it's at least 10 years ago.
That money was allocated 10 years, it took that long to...
I'm sorry, part of it was awarded to the city in 1999 and the larger portion came in 2000.
And then we would like to budget some money to replace the, some of the rubberized place surface and the playground equipment. And also it'd be nice to put in a new restroom at Hutter Crooks Park. This is toward the end where we put a new basketball court there. Sewer project, for next fiscal year, this coming fiscal year, all we plan to do is one little project right here at Redlands Boulevard where we plan to do a pipe bursting, use a pipe bursting procedure to expand the pipe from eight inches to 12 inches to increase the capacity and also at the same time, replacing the old pipe. That's for the next fiscal year. And then after that, we can do some of the small minor projects in the old part of town. Again, this is... The storm drain improvement, with the help of the county flood control, the city have completed, the county actually completed San Mateo Channel Improvement. So our portion is pretty minor. What we planned, last two years ago, we extended the storm drain underneath the railroad track at the end of campus. And next year, we would like to do a design to extend the storm drain at the end of Benton to come out toward San Mateo Channel right here. And later year, if we have money, we would like to put in the storm drain system behind the, behind the Grayson Center. Right now, it's just open channel. And future will be putting the storm drain at Barton Road right here. Now, street improvement. I'm happy to say that I have been working with the city of Loma Linda this week will be nine years and I pretty much paved every street in town. This year, as the mayor mentioned and Councilman Peterson mentioned, we just completed paving for Barton Road, Barton Road on Anderson all the way to Waterman and all the residential streets south of Barton Road from the west end, well, east end, I'm sorry, to Mountain View, with exception of Campus, Benton and Loma Linda Drive. We also paved California Street, which was in a bad shape, and also Mission, little piece right here. And we just completed that a couple of months ago. For next fiscal year, what we plan to do is pave the rest of Campus from Lawton to Barton Road, Benton from Barton Road to the end of railroad track here, Prospect from VA Hospital to the Mountain View Avenue, Stewart Street from Anderson all the way to Shepperson, and if we have money left over from Anderson, from Barton, all the way to Court Street. The money to do all this project is come from either CDBG grant or Measure I, which is the half-cent sale tax. In the past, we have not used any general fund money at all for the pavement rehabilitation. And then the following year, it's just more routine sewer seal along residential street. And I've been doing pretty good at make this a seven-year cycle for the, for sewer seal along the residential area.
Mr. City Manager, if you back up that slide, I suppose over the next couple of council meetings, you're going to hear a bit of reminiscing, but when I came on council 20 years ago, our streets were in horrible shape. I estimated at that time, or we estimated that, that we were probably somewhere between $3 and $5 million behind in street repairs in Loma Linda. They looked like some of our surrounding cities. And at, a year or two after that, I had proposed to fix our streets because I could see they were in bad shape at a small utility tax, which Mr. Ziprick and others opposed very strongly and I never got it. Came very close, within two votes, I think, of getting it. But this is a result of an added tax and that is the half-cent Measure I money and some other monies. So we are, we are, our streets are in great shape now, the best we've ever seen them, which I'm very, very proud of. But it did come as a result of some tax.
Next year, we plan to add one more traffic signal at the intersection of Redlands and Pablo Street.
And if I can digress also, you know, I think it's important to point out, we, a few years back, took over some very poorly maintained streets that used to be in county control in the Brenmar area and we've also upgraded those to a much better condition than they were. So not only have we been able to keep our own city streets in good shape, but we've also upgraded some things that were ignored by the county for many a year. And I think as a city, proud of being able to keep up with that and again, appreciate your leadership on getting that done.
Thank you, sir. And in addition to just pavement rehabilitation along the old county street, we also did the curb gutter sidewalk, street light and along on those area, so. And it's just going to the same project that I mentioned. Another thing that we would like to do next fiscal year is, we have been doing every year, is put in the sidewalk at various locations. These past couple of years, we put in a sidewalk in the north central neighborhood. We also put in the sidewalk in the Brenmar area and so we would like to continue to do that. And as you can see, a little bit every year, so. Sewer seal project and pavement rehabilitation, again, using Measure I money for next year and all the following years. Water line, water improvement. Again, we have been doing a good job at replacing the old water main in town. And in addition to that, we also completed new wells in the city. For example, back in 2008, we completed Richardson well number, I mean, Mountain View well number three and Mountain View well number five. And this year, we completed Mountain View well number six. And we just worked with Lockheed Martin to drill two new wells, which should be in line by the summer. And in addition to two new wells, they also put in a percorate treatment, water treatment facility for us. So by doing so, we can have plenty of water capacity, pumping capacity. Have to look at the water guy here. That, to serve the city of Loma Linda. What we'd like to do for this next fiscal year is to retrofit some of our reservoir. We have an 8 million gallon reservoir, a 3 million gallon reservoir, and 100,000 gallon reservoir that we would like to retrofit for this coming fiscal year. What are we doing with those reservoirs is, it's like your house. If you don't keep it paint, it will get rusty and it will leak. So what we'd like to do is drain the water out and recold the inside and outside of the steel water tank. And that concludes my five-year CIP.
I have a couple of questions. I know that a great deal of this money comes from the RDA and many of you may not know that we sent a check to the state to the $2.9 million yesterday, I believe?
Yes.
Because they're basically taking money away from us because they can't spend enough of it themselves. How do you see that impacting our ability to do some of these projects, not for this fiscal year, but three, four, or five years from now?
The, again, I have to look at Diana also. What we did, this $2.9 million that we just paid to the state yesterday, this thing came up last year. But then the association filed lawsuit against the city. But what we did was we kind of set that money aside and paid for it. But at the same time, what we usually use those RDA money for is pay back the loan that we incurred to do the project. And so, so what happened was just delayed paying those loan off.
Do you see that payment to the state affecting our ability to pursue some of these projects?
Well, luckily, luckily, we have been doing a good job at repairing and maintaining our infrastructure, so we should be in a good shape for a little while. Any comment you want to add, Diana?
The current payment, no, we don't see it affecting these current projects that Jarb has put into the next year's proposed budget. So it would just be any ongoing, if the state decides to come back for more money, that would impact the future five-year CIP.
So at the same time, I keep looking at Robbie's and ask the senator to help us. To woke the state. Any more questions?
Yeah, again, just on that, I think it is an important issue. As you mentioned, we budgeted for that, recognizing that unfortunately, the RDA may not be successful as other RDAs in challenging the state. So we did plan for it, but eventually, it's going to affect some projects down the line by not having that money. So that's why it's so important that we try and straighten out what's going on on the statewide level because it does have such a big impact on us. And sending a check for 2.9 million is just so frustrating for all of us in cities such as ourself and other cities around us with the same problems, so it's not just us.
What it actually does is leave our special projects fund with a balance of about $8,000 in it, I think. Wasn't that what we looked at yesterday?
Well, when I was looking at it, what we decided so that we don't draw it down so low is that we had scheduled in the current year to repay some other loans out of special projects. We're going to postpone those to the tune of 1.7 million, so we won't completely deplete our special projects fund and we'll just postpone those repayments.
So back to the overall plan, we have a roadmap, so to speak, of our capital improvement program. Obviously, there'll be some changes as funding comes along or goes away, depending on what the state does. There'll be other projects potentially added as needs arise, but at least gives us a overall structure and planning to take care of most of our major capital improvement needs. So, Councilman Ziprick?
One of the things that I know we're going to want to talk with our senator and our future assembly member is the future state budget because the last projections, Robbie, that we've been hearing were that the deficits were actually not going to get better, they were going to get worse. Has that changed? Are things getting better at all or not really?
At this point, there is a, I think it's over the next three to five years, they are projecting that there will be shortcuts. Yes. If we continue with all the programs that we currently have and funding them at the levels that we currently have, so it does mean that the state is going to have to, we have, the governor's made revise unlegibly coming out this Friday. Not too much has been done up to this point because the actual revenue coming into the state the first three months of this year were a long projection. And there were many in the capital that we're looking at, maybe they're drawn, but April revenues that came in were both long projections back basically.
Thank you.
My understanding, there is no formal action we need to take on this. This was a presentation to make us aware of this program and obviously, as funding comes along, there'll be additional actions for some of the items to approve specific funding, but tonight, it's informational items.
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir. And then, and at the next city council meeting, then the city council will approve the overall city budget, which will include all these capital improvement projects in there for next fiscal years.
So again, stay tuned, next council meeting, our budget session for next year. Every city's having great fun with that right now. year. Every city's having great fun with that right now. A lot of work been put in on that by budget committee and staff and, um, Councilman, uh, Papeskiu and Mayor Protim on this. So anyway, we'll get to review all that next council meeting. All right. If there's nothing else on capital improvement, uh, program, uh, go on to item 12, which is simply, uh, June two thousand ten meeting schedule. Uh, Adam Clerk?
Well, it was suggested that since the city council election is on June eighth, same day as our normal council meeting, that perhaps council members would have better things to do than to be at a meeting. In addition, we are able to present your, uh, two thousand ten, two thousand eleven budget, um, yet this May. So we had scheduled two meetings in June to accommodate a budget schedule. We're able to present that to you early. So it is your decision as to whether or not you do wish to meet on June eighth. We would still maintain the second meeting in, in June for business.
Up to the council and staff, uh, what direction to go. Um, I've floated one idea I had, but, uh, already have had some negatives on that. And that was to have the third Tuesday of the month as our only council meeting. So looking for any ideas or thoughts. Uh, I think, uh, it makes sense not to have the, uh, meeting on the second, uh, Tuesday because of the election. Uh, so choices, as I see it, be the fourth or if there was a consensus for some other time.
I'm flexible, Mr. Mayor. Whatever the rest come up with, I'll, I'll be here.
I heard some indication, um, Mayor, Mayor Protim Rigsby may not be able to make the fourth Tuesday. I don't, is that correct or not?
Well, he, he will not be here on the sixteenth, but I believe he will be here on the twenty-second.
Okay.
I will not be here on the twenty-ninth, if there was a meeting on the twenty-ninth. Um, I had called Job earlier today to ask if there was anything pressing that we needed to meet twice that month. And from my understanding, there isn't. So I'm comfortable with the idea of just keeping the schedule as it is and not meeting on the eighth and only meeting one time that month, which would be on the twenty-second.
The earlier week would be better for me, but I can, I'll make this meeting. I would, uh, I was hoping to be away then.
I was too.
Well...
Many will feel that way.
Yeah. Well, I guess, uh, we could at the moment leave our meetings as scheduled with the understanding that the eighth would be, uh, suspended or, um, um, not actually held. Would it be possible to make a final decision at our next meeting in May to see if there's a final consensus with everyone present?
Sure, I can put it back on the agenda also.
Why, why don't we?
Um, our meetings in July. I anticipate having the canvas from the registrar voters and would also anticipate being able to seat council members on July thirteenth. And that's the only business that would be considered that evening. And then the normal business meeting would then occur on July twenty-seventh. Keep that in mind.
That makes sense and, uh, don't see any reason that, uh, that should change. All right, um, we will leave that on the calendar, uh, for our next city council meeting and, um, leave our meetings listed at the moment for the usual second and fourth Tuesday of that month. All right, reports of councilmen. Councilman Peterson?
Mr. Mayor, some years ago, I formed a, a committee to raise some money and assist in election expenses. It was called the Elect Floyd Peterson, Re-Elect Floyd Peterson Committee. And I was requi, I am required, when I form that committee, uh, to report all activities, uh, expenses and money that comes into that, raised by that committee every six months. I think that there may have been one time or two when I was twenty-four hours late and I didn't sleep very well that night, but I managed to get it in, uh, pretty fast. Um, in the last, uh, few days, I had some spare time on my hands. I have never looked over finance papers of any other committees before, but, uh, I have in the past, just recently. I discovered something very interesting. There are two committees in town. One of them is called the Save Loma Linda Committee, and the other is called the Georgia Hodgkins, Wayne Isaiah F. Kathy Glendridge, Jay and Valerie Glant Committee. And these committees over the past, since nineteen, since two thousand and seven, have raised well over thirteen thousand dollars, um, on, in money and, and spent almost that much money. And they made no reports of this since two thousand and seven up until March of this year. That's over three years. And that did take us through one election cycle. And the, these committees have been very, very active in town, uh, in, in, in election issues. And, um, since they're very, seem to be very quick in reporting the sins, real and imagined, of everybody else, uh, I thought that is important that the public realize what has happened, number one. Number two, there are very strict election laws set by the Fair Political Practices Commission of the State of California, which impose substantial fines for neglect to report this kind of activity. And the, let, the officer to enforce these in the city is the city clerk. Um, and the reason I bring this up tonight is because, uh, one of the issues that is going to become important is that these laws be consistently enforced. And it, I'm a little bit troubled by the fact that it is strictly up to the city clerk to, to enforce these rules. And I'm wondering, Mr. Attorney, if it would be appropriate or proper for the city to set some sort of policy to be sure that these rules are consistently enforced across the board or some sort of policy that we have that would be followed by the city. Uh, and to have this in place, I presume someday our city clerk may choose to retire and we'll have a new one coming in. And so that there would be some sort of consistency across the board, would it be appropriate for the city to institute some sort of policy, uh, that would be followed instead of simply leaving this up to, um, the city clerk to determine whether in fact, um, or what should happen in a case like this? Um, you know, I'd certainly be happy to see, uh, you know, a fifteen-day period when one would be given some consideration. But to allow this kind of thing to go on for three years during an election cycle when these committees are very active, I think is just totally unexplainable and unacceptable.
Mr. City Attorney, would you care to respond?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman. Um, certainly, the city clerk is the election official. Um, is the person charged with enforcing these rules on the local election. Um, as was mentioned, however, the, ultimately, the Fair Political Practices Commission has jurisdiction of their own. Um, although my understanding is that on the local elections, they, they would not typically, uh, be actively enforcing. Uh, they still have the jurisdiction if a complaint is made to them. Um, as far as a, a policy at the city level, um, there are certain issues of preemption. Um, state law establishes what the deadlines are, what filings need to be made. And the city clerk, as election official, would have the discretion to, uh, enforce those, to send out notices, uh, and perhaps even issue, uh, a penalty, uh, if that were, uh, appropriate. So to answer your question, yes, the, uh, city clerk could prepare and, and adopt a formal policy, um, that could give future guidance or reminders to interested parties, um, and lay out, um, the practice in Loma Linda as far as enforcement. Um, the council could, uh, approve that policy or simply, um, uh, take notice of it and, and give that information to the public. Um, if, if the clerk chooses to adopt the policy and, and the council wishes to, uh, post that on the website, that could be done, uh, or provide it to candidates and other interested persons. So certainly a more formal policy could be adopted. I assume the clerk has a, a policy that she's been following, uh, fairly consistently in the past. And, um, she may want to comment upon that. But if, if, in order to avoid, uh, recurrences of, of any particular issue, um, it would certainly be appropriate to have a more formalized policy. I'm, I'm personally not acquainted with a city that has a formal policy to that extent, but, uh, I could make inquiries and, uh, we could certainly try to adopt a simple policy that, uh, would be helpful in the future.
Councilman Zipper?
Mr. Mayor, one of the, one of the difficulties on something like this, uh, law is that the clerk is put in an awkward position of potentially having to enforce penalties against the people, excuse me, the people who are the governing body who actually employ the clerk, which creates an awkward position. Uh, if there's uniform policy, the clerk can say, okay, we'll just follow the policy. But, but, uh, a clerk, it, it's almost as though, uh, a person is having to go to their bosses and essentially find them i- in, in the roundabout way. Uh, and that's one of the problems with a law like this. I would be interested, Mr. City Attorney, if you could have, um, some input for us of what other cities have done in this regard. If there's been a way that they could, uh, insulate or protect a clerk who has to, who has to do that or has to make a decision. Or does the law simply never get enforced because of that? Because it is an awkward situation. Recognizing the clerk might not actually go after sitting council persons, but could go after groups that have been involved with campaigns and things like that. And we have to look ahead for many years and say, okay, what's a fair policy? Uh, if somebody inadvertently misses something by a day, you know, one can understand that. But if you get to a, it needs to be applied. So it's a long-term understanding of what is a fair policy for everybody to live with, that it isn't putting the clerk into a position of having to be subjective and exercise discretion in a way that's not consistent.
Well, I, I agree that it's something we could look into and, uh, see if there are any other cities that have adopted such a policy. Uh, I'm not aware of that at this moment, but, uh...
Well, Mr. City Attorney, there was a second part to my comment, was the, has it actually been enforced? In other words, if there is no policy and it's never been enforced, there might be a connection. Because, and I don't know if in your attorney meetings if this has ever come up.
It has not.
That might be a subject where, because, you know, if the law's there and it's never enforced, then it has a certain effect within the community too.
As I mentioned, the ultimate enforcement with the Fair Political Practices Commission, um, uh, takes, takes an issue of local concern and kind of moves it out of our jurisdiction into the hands of, of other persons. Um, but that's not always the best way to address a, a local issue. So, uh, I agree that it's something that we could look into and that might be helpful to have a more formal policy if, if the council feels that, uh, there's a concern.
I, I spoke with the Fair Political Practices Commission today. And there are two parts to the penalty. One of them is the one which the local city levies. And the second one is the one which they levy. These are two separate penalties that they levy on this kind of a thing. And our city, by the way, does have a record of levelling penalty. We've done it in the past.
Madam Clerk, any additional comments at this point?
In talking with the FPPC on various situations, and if I, if I get into something where I, I need advice, I'm not afraid to make a phone call. FPPC does not usually review local campaign statements. They are interested in your statements of economic interested, interest, particularly planning commission and city council members. And, um, finance directors, city attorneys, city managers. They're not into the campaign statements on, on local issues unless there is a complaint filed or unless there is some question. They will look into it. Um, I have contacted the FPPC regarding this situation. I needed some guidance. And they will be looking into it. I can say that much at this point, and that's where it lies. Uh, but there are two parts to it. There is a part where I, as election official, may impose a fine. And I'm guided by the rules of the FPPC in that. And then the second issue is whether or not the FPPC will be issuing any fines. But they will be reviewing the actual campaign statements. They have requested it.
Without, uh, any specifics on any particular case, which I'm not going to get into since I don't have knowledge of that, but I do agree with the concern that I think it, it does potentially put the city clerk in a tough position. And having not really thought about this before, I think it does behoove us to ask the city attorney to, uh, look at some guidance. I'd always kind of thought, uh, all enforcement, especially monetary, was from FPPC and not so much on a local level. But, uh, that's a nuance for fairness for all. I think we do need to look at for future, uh, future reference. And, uh, so we'll ask for, uh, guidance on that if that's acceptable, uh, for future, uh, updates from the city attorney.
One, one future, uh, other comment. Um, uh, she said that the FPPC does not typically, on their own initiative, get involved. However, like the IRS, they do random audits. I know because I have been audited once. Uh, I was the subject of a random audit and I had to submit all my papers and all my details and all my records to the FPPC. And they were happy with what I'd done. But they do random audits because I've, I've had it, I've had it done.
Other comments from Councilman, Councilman Zipper?
Yes, uh, two brief ones. First, Mr. Mayor, uh, one of our fellow citizens was injured, excuse me, when he, uh, was walking into a business in town, stepped on some of the droppings from the date trees. Uh, they're, they're not really edible dates, but they're, I guess you'd call them inedible dates. They're those hard little shells. And, uh, he actually was injured quite badly. He, he slipped and was thrown into a plate glass window of a store. Excuse me, was unconscious, rendered unconscious. And he told me he's had three surgeries. This was nine months ago. His concern was that, um, and he, he, obviously, he blacked out. And, uh, he talked to people who were in the, in the business and they heard this tremendous crash as he hit. And they said it had, had hit twice. So obviously it was a severe matter from his understanding because he doesn't remember it. And he, he wanted to raise the question because he was concerned because obviously in our part of the country, there are lots of, uh, po- palm trees that shed dates. I guess you want to call them that. And oh, uh... Yes, there's seeds. I know, uh, Karen, uh, Guy Ohansberger, uh, wanted to make war on them. Uh, she would have the council remove every palm tree in town if she would have had the ability. But they're not necessarily every palm tree that does this, but they're, they're apparently enough. And the concern he wanted to raise, uh, he, he wanted to make people aware of, of this danger because there are enough of these trees around that can cause this. And talk, I talked with staff and I know he had talked to staff a little bit about it. And, uh, I, I, I did, uh, understand that it was not on city property. However, it was in an area that could get close to a sidewalk. So one of the questions I, I threw out to staff is, is there anything we have to be concerned about on something like this? Maybe staff could, could, can make a comment or two because it doesn't directly affect us. But nevertheless, it, he was concerned that other citizens may have the same thing happen. And I don't think we should ban every palm tree that sheds dates, but...
Well, we, we, we have, uh, we also do, uh, actually inspection on our, our city sidewalk. And one of them, because I walk in town with my wife and, and I, I check our sidewalk. And also Public Works crew also go out and, and, and walk the sidewalk and check the sidewalk. And when we see the problem, we usually fix it right away. And we can keep that, that, that item so that my, my guys can, can pay more attention to those, uh, dropping.
I suppose one of the things we could do is talk with the Chamber of Commerce and have just alert businesses to, to, you know, do their business programs to be careful. I don't know, Madam Clerk, I know you had, you'd also been contacted and you did some research?
He did contact me also. It was on private property. And in that situation, of course, the city would not be involved. It was on private property, and in that situation, of course, the city would not be involved. However, if there's a condition on private property that causes an incident to occur on public property, such as a sidewalk, the city would get involved in that. It would file a subrogation claim through our JPIA to the private property owner. So it behooves private property owners to maintain their property, you know, trim their trees and so forth. As a city, we do have a tree trimming program, and so we, we follow that diligently. If there are problem trees, they need to be made aware of that, so they are maintained or trimmed, removed, whatever would, would meet their, you know, reduce their liability issues.
Thank you. And, and while we're on the subject of public works, I know, Mr. City Manager, we had dialogued on a drain, it's a drain cover, manhole cover that was at an angle, and some of the people who live on Benton had, had raised concerns, because that's their walking route. And I know we've talked about that, and you have, you had something you've been working on, on that.
Yes, sir. And it just happened to be that that manhole at the corner of the VA driveway and Benton, that manhole belonged to Verizon. We have been in contact with Verizon, but they delayed getting it done. So tomorrow, I might go out with the street superintendent and see what the city can do. Maybe our city crew can do it ourselves and get it done.
Finally, I have, I have a question. This may be appropriate for the city attorney or perhaps the clerk. Recognizing we're in an election season, one of the questions that's come up is, I know we've discussed this in other elections, is where is it okay to put our signs? I have placed signs on private property where people have asked me to. I had somebody tell me that there have been signs placed on city right of way by, by other campaigns, and that they understood that they had a right to do that in this election cycle. And I have seen, frankly, quite a few signs on the city right of way. I haven't been sure if that was okay or not. I'd like to keep, keep even with my friendly competition, and I'm not sure how far I'm allowed to go in copying my, my fellow candidates. Am I allowed to go onto public right of way if, you know, we're talking about the grass areas that are landscape maintenance districts or not? If they're adjacent to a house that says, has supporters of myself?
No, you can only place political signs on private property, and hopefully you have the permission of the property owner to place a sign there.
And in fact, our, I believe our sign code prohibits any signs in the public right of way. We don't specifically, well, there, there are issues as far as content in allowing one type of sign and prohibiting another type of sign in the public right of way. We, we are entitled to ban all signs in the public right of way, and I believe that's the policy.
So if there's signs that are sitting in the public right of way, those signs ought to be removed, or now if some of them stay there a long time, I suppose that that is something that the city would eventually come along and remove them? Some have been there for more than a week, so I just didn't know if, if that was the situation. And I, I don't want to lose competitively to people who are putting signs in places like that, because I've had a, one of my supporters say, well, put it in the public area right next to my house, just like is down the street. And I said, you know, I'm not sure I can do that till I check, so that's the reason I raise it.
Well, hopefully, all affected persons and residents would be aware that signs in the public right of way are not permitted and would comply with that. If signs are placed illegally, staff could remove those.
Okay.
During, during election periods, we typically don't like to touch and handle other people's signs. It's, it gets to be a pretty sensitive issue. But we do contact the candidates and let them know that, that they need to remove the signs or place them out of the public right of way. If a sign presents a traffic hazard, we've actually had signs placed at the middle of medians along Barton Road, then we, we will remove them and contact the sign purveyor.
Does that mean that if the signs are not legal, but they're not a traffic hazard, they will be left there, and that those who follow the rules won't put them there, and then those that don't will put them there? And they'll be left?
No, well, we do, as I said, we do contact the, the candidates and/or their, their offices and ask them to remove the signs. I, I mean, we can't really control where they place them, but they're given a packet by the city clerk that includes information on where and how you can place political signs, and you need to file an application with Community Development. It's not a, a feed, not a fee application, but just indicate how many signs you're going to put out and where they're going to be located. And we try to monitor it that way, but sometimes the signs aren't put out the way that they're proposed to go out.
Okay, I'll follow the rules. Thank you.
Just to follow up on that issue, I, I guess that's one of my pet peeves. I wish we could outlaw all such signs. Just a blight on the community, but we can't, and I know that. But I strongly, from my soapbox, I would like to see, it seems like we have the, the rules on the books, notify anyone that has an illegal sign, give them a reasonable number of days, whatever you choose that to be, and then have staff remove. If it's illegal, it's illegal. There shouldn't be any, any one side, one candidate that, you know, should be able to flaunt those if we have those rules. So that's my two cents on that. I'm trying not to entertain any more response from audience. Please, would the rest of the council like to open, open discussion?
Sure.
I have a recommendation. There is going to be a open session for public comments in the RDA. You may want to make your comment then.
That seems fair. That would work.
Sounds good. We got a solution. Councilman Peterson?
One other question I do have on signs, and that has puzzled me for a long time. Do campaign signs, which are political statements, are, do they come under any kind of different rules than, say, a sign advertising puppies for sale or something? And, and here's where I'm going with it. I believe that we have an ordinance, or part of our sign ordinance in town precludes putting signs on fences. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
But there's all kinds of signs on fences. There are signs that say beware of dog. There are signs, doorbell here. There are signs that say, you know, this is protected by some security. There's, there's, so what signs are allowed on fences and which ones aren't allowed on fences? That's my first question. And number two, if I own the fence and I'm making a political statement, could I, can I be precluded from putting a sign on my own fence that I own, making my own political statement? Isn't that a First Amendment right?
Well, there are definitely First Amendment issues. The, the sign code that we have is due for update, and that's part of what will be accomplished in the next amendment to our development code. So I don't want to go too far into discussion of, of what may be in the new code or what needs to be changed currently, but the general rule is that signs may be regulated, but the content of signs typically may not be. And so a political sign would be regulated in the same way that other signs would be regulated. In other words, because a, a particular message is on a, the sign would not make that sign permissible or impermissible, the content of the sign is not the issue. It's, other aspects of signs may be regulated, their location, size, other aspects, but we don't go and regulate the words that a person places on a sign.
Is that, do you think, and you may not want to comment, do you think that that is sustainable in court if it's a political statement?
Well...
Has it been challenged?
A content-based regulation is very problematic.
I tell you, my inclination every time I see signs plastered on the fences next to the freeway that's clearly in public right of ways and illegal is to take note and try not to vote for any of those folks. I just clutter, clutter up the freeways, just, you know, anyway. Other comments, councilmen?
Do any of our candidates have signs by the freeway, I wonder? Actually, I was hoping that the city attorney could entertain. My suggestion has nothing to do with legal issues, but I had forewarned him that I might use him as a prop earlier. As many of you know, I am a big proponent of trying to get people to do business in Loma Linda, and that can include anything from buying gas, which unfortunately today, I ran out of, almost ran out of gas in, in the Moreno Valley, so had to buy it there, unfortunately. But I actually make a conscientious effort of trying to fill up my gas tank in Loma Linda. And not only do we actually have some of the cheaper gas, but we actually get a fair amount of money, tax money, from gas tax. So that's one way people can help, and we know, we benefit from employers such as the university and the medical center and the VA, who have a lot of visitors in here, and they do use a lot of our services. But there's always things that we can do, and may, many of you may know that I'm a big Mac proponent, and I love Macs, and I showed my iPad at the last council meeting and reminded everyone that they could purchase one here in Loma Linda. They don't have to go to Semerit, you know? They don't have to go to Rancho Cumanga, but you can actually buy an iPad or an Apple computer here at the bookstore. And I don't know if I was influential, but our city attorney bought one, not from Loma Linda, but nevertheless, he does have one, and I just wanted to remind everyone that unlike the Apple Store, maybe the Best Buy, who actually doesn't have any in stock, Loma Linda does have iPads in stock to purchase tomorrow. So for anyone who's interested, and not to promote a particular product or business, but that applies to any other services in Loma Linda, whether it be eating lunch or buying books or buying good, other goods and services. It would be great if we all just consciously make an effort to try to promote our local businesses, because they thrive, and if they thrive, we all benefit. So I don't know if Mr. City Attorney has his iPad to show or not, but...
I do, and Councilman, I apologize. I thought you said I should buy it where I lived. And I, I live in the city of Rancho.
Well, we may have you move over here.
I would be happy to do that at some point.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, while we're on the subject of, which I certainly support over your, your marketing efforts, we have a very unique business in town, which is selling Japanese swords, at least it used to be. Is that right? In fact, that gentleman's going to get up in the next chance and make a comment, probably not on that, but on something else. But, but we have some unique businesses here in this town, and we ought to, we'll have to work through our chamber like we've been doing, I guess, over a few years, and continue to market those. Because I think that's a great idea to encourage people to eat out and buy swords and do other things.
Are, are swords taxable?
I'm sure they are. I'm sure they are.
Yeah, it does bring up the idea of work with the chamber. Maybe we can post some of these businesses that people don't think of on our, on website or TV for jog people's memory, because someone may not think of...
I think it's the only Japanese, I think it's the only sword shop of its type in the United States, last I checked. You don't have any competitors here yet. Okay.
Well, I can even beat the iPad. I bought a very nice tuxedo in Loma Linda once. I bought a very nice tuxedo in Loma Linda one time, which I still wear, down at the U Shop down in...
We should probably end this, because he's probably dying to get up here and talk about something else, but we're talking about his business. I hope that helps you sell one sword.
I do have three quick comments, and then we'll wrap up this section unless there's something else. Mentioned a former mayor with war on palm trees. I was told there was a mayor before I came on council that had a war on another kind of tree and wanted them removed, but I'm going to clearly state, I want as many trees as possible, and I don't want any kind of trees removed. Number two, got a letter sent to me as mayor, and maybe some of the council members did too, academy student hiking in the hills, and their concern of almost being run over by a motorcycle and so forth on the trails. You know, we've danced around this issue. We've kind of taken a laissez-faire attitude toward it, but I guess I'm going to throw out to the Parks Committee again to look at this in a little more detail. Do we have further directions that we may choose to go to enforce some bans that I believe are in place? And what should we do for this issue, not only for just the enjoyment of the solitude that's broken by motor vehicles, but the safety issue that this person brought up? So again, appreciate a student that wrote that letter. We will take a look at that again, and I think it's a very legitimate concern. The last item I wanted to bring up briefly, we as a city sent the LA Airport Commission a letter with concerns about being exposed to secondhand smoke every time you walk in the terminal in Ontario. We got a letter back a few weeks ago that was frankly well short of any what I feel is a constructive, a solution, and I'm very disappointed. I have made several trips to the airport in the last few weeks. Every time I walk through those doors, get blasted by smoke. Happened to be there today to pick someone up. There was a baby carriage there on the sidewalk, and you, you walked by it, the smoke smell was overpowering of someone smoking just upwind of that. Why am I bringing this up? Simply urge every citizen to get on the website, write letters, call up LA Airport Commission, tell them it's unacceptable that airports should be smoke-free except for one designated smoking area that's downwind, that would be clearly free of any exposure unless you chose to put yourself in that particular area. There are places such as their dog park that they could make their smoking area, and everything else should be made smoke-free. And it just is infuriating that their seeming lack of seriousness on this issue, and I think we need to make, make them aware that it is a real concern. All right, those are my issues. If there's no other reports, councilmen, reports of officers. Just remind you again, the Sunday History Fair that we heard about.
Thank you.
Thank you. I believe our city council meeting is adjourned with the RDA to follow.
I guess, being Vice Chairman, I could simply chair this. I could give the gavel to the mayor if you would like.
Chair meeting, not mine.
We call the RDA meeting to order. Are any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
We get to the point where all reports of public participation. Mr. Christensen, you had a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Three things. Signs. Stan, I know you'd like every candidate to print up a single mailer and mail it to every voter and, and, and take every sign down. The fact of the matter is, chain link fences on Redwood Boulevard are full of assemblymen. Seems like all the statewide stuff is, is tacked to the chain link fences without regard to any ordinances in Loma Linda. I take a pretty wide view on that, and we can agree to disagree and still smile and be friends. Let them all have it. Let them put the signs wherever they want. Let them clutter it up for a few days and clean it up afterwards. Let the people vote, okay? Let them put it where they want to. We got garage sale signs that pop up every Friday morning, fluorescent on every single, you know, telephone poles, signs that, you know, going in every direction. There's no enforcement of that. So give the citizens a break. Let them see, well, you know, if, if it's, if it's going to be whoever has the most signs wins, then our whole system is breaking down. Whoever, you know, I hope the people look at the issues rather than the number of signs. That's my, trails, motorcycles, okay? There's people that ride horses up there, okay? And they say that the horses spook when a bicycle goes by, but don't have any reaction. when a motorcycle goes by, because they can hear it coming. So you've got two sides to every coin, okay? Businesses, thank you very much for the plug. It's the Antique Mall and Tappanise Sword Shop. Now, it's been integrated into one great, big fat, and a year ago, February, when I was forced to take it over, and Ovi, you and Dusty, thank you very much for your efforts to try to find businesses there. We're talking to lots of businesses that can use other parts of those parcels of land. Sonic Burgers, Microtel, we also want to talk to Panera's. They like to have two close by each other's. And Panera's would be good for business in Loma Linda. Everybody likes Panera's. A year ago, February, again, when I was forced to take over the business, I did the unthinkable. In the antiques business, the antiquing day for most people is Saturday. And I walked in, and I only had 12 vendors left and mortgaged me. And I said, we're going to close on Saturday. No discussion, no question about it, that's not up for discussion. We're closed Friday night, sundown, until Saturday night, sundown. You'll never make it past two months. That's what, they were all up in the upper. You'll never make it past two months. And, you know, dealers left, because we weren't going to be open on the antiquing day. And I said, look, give us 90 days. Just give us 90 days. A year and a half later...
Mr. Christensen, I don't want to cut you off, but we've already gone beyond three minutes.
Over 40 vendors.
Great, wonderful. Thank you. Moving on to item number one, minutes of the March 9th and April 13th meeting. Is there a motion?
Move, approval.
Any opposition? Hearing item is moved. Item number two, Council Bill R2010-15, refinancing of agency first-time homebuyer's loan for 10605 Lind Avenue. Madam Secretary?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if you remember, this was one of our very first manufactured home projects to be placed on single-family lots, and the financing mechanism at that time was to have the agency finance for a three-year period, during which time the new homebuyer was to attempt to seek outside financing with the agency participating in some manner. With the economy the way it is, that is not able to be accomplished, and so the time has expired, the three-year period, and so the agency is willing to refinance the principal balance at this point, under the terms that have been formally approved by the agency board. It would be a traditional mortgage with interest charged. This also has an impound account for taxes and insurance, and the new buyers have agreed to the terms of the new agreement, and by this resolution, then we'd be able to record the documents and refinance.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Hearing the opposition, so it's moved. Item number three, I think we already discussed regarding the regular city council meetings, so there's an opportunity that we may have to revisit that item at the next council meeting. Any reports from anyone else? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you.